Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Meeting, March 21st, 2019. And we will have our prayer and pledge by Councilman Eddie Smotherman.
If you would, please pray with me. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for our city staff. We thank you for our police officers, our firefighters, our teachers, and all the other public servants who make this community the greatest community that it is. We thank you for our blessings. We thank you for your grace. We certainly appreciate your healing hands being wrapped around those who are not comfortable tonight. And so, we really hope that our city continues to be blessed, and in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a ceremonial item that's going to be presented by Councilman Ronnie Martin.
Our mayor could not be here tonight, and Vice Mayor Skiles has deferred to me, but we have a proclamation which I'll read. Whereas National Athletic Training Month is held every March in order to spread awareness about all that athletic trainers do. Athletic trainers have a long history of providing quality health care for athletes and those engaged in physical activity based upon specific tasks, knowledge, and skills acquired through their nationally regulated educational process. And whereas the National Athletic Trainers Association represents and supports 43,000 members of the athletic training profession employed in professional sports, colleges, universities, high schools, clinics, hospitals, corporate and industrial settings, military branches, and whereas leading organizations concerned with athletic training and health care have joined together in a common desire to raise public awareness of the importance of athletic training, of the athletic training profession, and to emphasize the importance of quality health care. And whereas such effort will improve health care for athletes and those engaged in physical activity and promote athletic trainers as health professionals. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire City Council do hereby proclaim the entire month of March as National Athletic Training Month. And Murfreesboro urge all citizens to learn more about the importance of athletic training. Mayor Shane McFarland.
Thank you. Is it anyone here to, they're going to receive?
Sure.
Just wait here, if somebody will take a picture for us.
Squeeze, please, please. Can you get us all?
Hey Drew, thank you, ma'am.
Congratulations, and thank you. Okay, now we'll have Mr. Greg Tucker to educate us tonight on our history. Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. I hope you enjoyed the first day of spring. We had a beautiful start.
Oh, yes.
We're going to do a little review tonight, and I'm going to need the help from the panel, please. We're actually going to have a test. And I'm taking the information straight off some of our state markers. There's one at the corner of the new bridge over Broad and Broad, and there's one out near the city limits north of Murfreesboro. And our text comes from those. The way I'm going to do it is there'll all be true, false questions. I only have five questions, so the Vice Mayor's going to get a pass.
Thank you.
And she certainly earned the pass. She did a very fine presentation for the Rutherford County Historic Society in February. Very informative and quite emotional. We really appreciate that. So you've earned a pass.
Thank you.
The rest of you need to get up on your toes. All right. I'm going to start over here with Councilman Shacklet. I'm going to give you a statement, and you tell me whether you think it's true or false. We're talking about the very earliest history of Murfreesboro. William Lidle was a captain in the Revolutionary Army.
True.
True. See, this isn't hard. He actually served ably as a captain in the North Carolina militia, which technically was part of the Revolutionary Army. Keep your chin up, that holds down the glare.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Martin, for his services during the Revolution, William Lidle received a large grant of land in Rutherford County.
Yes.
True or false?
This isn't a yes or no question.
He usually just says here.
If you need help, just ask around, why don't you?
Ask a friend. True.
You said true?
Yes, sir.
The answer's false.
That was Hardy Murphy.
William Lidle did not receive any North Carolina land grant in Rutherford County. He did get a substantial grant north of here. If you understood that a captain wasn't eligible for 7,000 acres, which is what the land grant was here. And so who got the land grant? Colonel Archibald Lidle, the older brother of William Lidle, received the land grant. Conveniently died before he could claim his grant, and the grant was descended to seven heirs, and William Lidle bought out the other six. This is all confirmed by the North Carolina land grant records. Councilman LaLance?
I'm listening.
The town of Murfreesboro was placed on part of this land grant.
I know it was spelled with an O-U-G-H. Let's see.
Yeah, you're always a month behind. I understand.
Not Hardy Murphy got the land grant, but I'm going to say true.
You say that's...
Lidle's.
Lidle, no. The town of Murfreesboro, and this is a matter that was in confusion for many years, between the land grant to Lidle and the several parcels that Hardy Murphy obtained through purchase, was 210 acres unclaimed land. So Lidle cleverly waited until Murphy died, then he applied to the State of Tennessee because the North Carolina program was at an end, and he got a grant from the State of Tennessee for 210 acres. And the land that was used for Murfreesboro, it was part of that 210 acres, didn't touch the 7,200 that was part of the land grant. All right, Councilman Smotherman.
You gave him the question before tonight. I know you did. I know you already told him the question.
He serves on the Board of Directors for the Rutherford County Historic Society.
You better get it right. I know. He's probably going to miss it. Yeah. I'm feeling a little pressure here.
He's the only one going through his phone flipping like...
I'm pre-Googleing already.
You ready for your question?
I'm ready. Google away.
Lidle donated the land for Murfreesboro. True or false?
I'm going to phone a friend. Craig Tindall. I think that's true.
Well, it isn't.
Not even a corner lot?
You called the wrong guy. Read the marker, it says donated the land. No, he drove a hard bargain. He says, "I'll give you what he thought was about 60 acres in exchange for the southeast corner of the square after you get everything built." It was a land swap. In the deed, you might recall, that Lidle signed, they made him sign where it said, "I acknowledge that I'm being greatly benefited by this transaction." So he really was the better end of the deal. All right, Councilman Wade, I hope you've seen a pattern here.
Can we call a help hotline? I know somebody was born in that...
Lidle.
Gary Whitaker?
Lidle stipulated that the new town would be named for Colonel Hardy Murphy. True or false?
True.
Speak up.
True.
True. No. You'd think he would have seen the pattern.
I thought it was true, false, false, false.
Well, Phil needed help. All right. No, Lidle had absolutely nothing to do with the naming of the town. Back in 1930, the story began to circulate about him wanting it named for his dear friend. Actually, they weren't very close friends at all. Andrew Lidle apparently put out the story in about 1930, and it caught on, but he had nothing to do with it. The name Murfreesboro was specified by the state legislature about six months before they even decided where to put it. So then when the legislature said, "You can move the county seat, go find a place for it, and when you find a place, you're going to call it Murfreesboro."
Initially, it was Cannonsburg though, wasn't it?
Speak up.
Wasn't it initially Cannonsburg? Isn't that where Cannonsburg was mentioned?
That's another good story. But the only place Cannonsburg ever attached to a piece of real estate in Tennessee was in 1976, when we opened a little Pioneer Village. All right, except for Councilman Shacklet, you guys did lousy. I'll tell you this, though, my next book is going to be titled, "I Read It On A Marker." It must be true.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I'm working up here with a smart group. Okay, consent agenda. Any questions or comments, corrections? If not, did we get a motion?
Mayor, we're going to pull Item 10.
Okay.
Out of the consent agenda for a couple of weeks, answer a couple of questions.
Okay.
It's 10, right? Rick.
Auction, Rick?
Purchase of vehicles?
Is that the right one? Councilmember LaLance?
That's it.
That's it? Okay.
Okay, so can we get a motion, questions, comments? Deleting question 10? Can I get a second, please?
Hold on, just want to save a look at this real quick, okay? You guys, sorry, I got to get to it. There was another piece of it, Craig, I thought, other than just the vehicles, it was, there was a... I don't know why it's not coming, taking me to it, but...
It's on the paper, Rick.
Yeah, but I'm trying to find it.
I'll just look it for you, Rick.
I got it. Yeah, mine didn't update from the update. Yes, that's correct. Sorry. I got it back, get it back in.
Okay, if there's no concerns about the removal of Item 10, I'll suggest that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item 10.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye. Old business, ordinance 18-0... Let me start off. 18-0Z-68 rezoning approximately 0.51 acres located along Black Monroe, second and final reading, 2018-435.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye. It was requested that we pull Item 12, so we're going to go to Item 13. Plan of Services Annexation and Zoning for approximately 112.3 acres located along Beale's Road, 2018-510, and 2018-431, 18.4 acres RS6, 85.8 acres RS10, 4.8 acres RS12.
Good evening, everyone. At the November 29th, 2018 City Council Meeting, the Council reviewed an annexation request for 112.3 acres located along the north side of Beale's Road. At that time, the Council voiced concerns with what appeared to be the unnecessary creation of an island of unincorporated county surrounded by the city. Staff has revised the annexation request and the plan of services to remove the portion of Beale's Road right-of-way located between the subject property and Bradyville Pike. By removing this portion of right-of-way, three lots in the unincorporated county north of Beale's Road would remain connected to the unincorporated county lots south of Beale's Road. This is the only change that's been made to the annexation request since the November Council Meeting. The next item on your agenda deals with a rezoning, and if it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and address that while I'm here. The applicant has requested rezoning of approximately 109 acres to a combination of RS6, RS10, and RS12. The bulk of the property, about 86 acres, would fall under the RS10 designation. Action on the rezoning was deferred at the November 29th meeting pending the change to the annexation request and the plan of services. The rezoning request likewise has not changed since November. The Council has already held public hearings for the annexation and rezoning requests, so no public hearings would be necessary tonight for either of these items. Just as a reminder, the Planning Commission voted to send both of these requests forward to you with favorable recommendations. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, Mr. Tucker, on that addition, would that have to come back to us for the second reading, or do we incorporate that into what we're doing tonight?
The addition or subtraction?
The subtraction of the road.
It's a subtraction, though.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. The subtraction, that can go forward today, doesn't...
And this is, you know, something that's a little bit, you know, when I was reading through this the other night, something that's a little bit confusing. When we have these things under old business, you know, we've never had first reading on this, right? I mean, it comes up under old business as if, you know, typically, we're going to have second reading tonight when it shows up under old business, you know? But this is first time we will have done it. We've just gotten through the...
Public hearing.
Public hearing stage, right?
Okay.
That's correct. So this would be first reading on all of these.
Okay. Mr. Shacklet?
But it doesn't have to go back for a public hearing.
It does not, yeah, because it's such a small...
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll have another reading on that.
So Mr. Anthony, can, I'll look back through the minutes a little bit from our last meeting, but it had been, you know, it's been a couple or three months now since we discussed this. You know, there seemed to be, to me, I recall that there were several issues that weren't just this little sliver of road. Do you have any of that kind of bullet point information, or, I mean, as far as any kind of refresher, what was your take on some of the other issues as it relates to the density, the relativity to the other property around it? There were some other things that seemed to be coming up.
Yeah, so what I do recall from that meeting was that there was a little bit of concern with the RS6 in particular. What I would say about the RS6 is that it is buffered within the site. The proposed rezoning around, if you can see on the screen, the blue rezoning would be RS10, which that actually would be compatible with all of the city property. If you look on the left side of your screen, this entire subdivision is RS10, the property to the north is RS10. So the adjoining or adjacent property seems to be a compatible zoning with this RS10. The other thing to remember is that even though this is shown as RS6 and RS10 for the most part, this development, any development here would have to rely on a step system, which is going to consume a considerable amount of the property here. So while that density may sound a little high with the RS6 in particular, I don't think that they're going to be able to achieve the full density potential on this site.
Okay, if we could get a motion and a second on the plan of services? Can we get a second?
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye. Okay, could we get a motion and a second on the annexation?
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye. And can we get a motion and a second on the ordinance, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye. Okay, plan of service and annexation for approximately 1.8 acres located along Joby Jackson Parkway, 2018-512.
The applicant for this one is Ginger McCreary, and she has requested annexation of a 1.3 acre lot that's located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Joby Jackson Parkway and Anell Drive. Staff has adjusted the annexation request to include 300 feet of right-of-way along Joby Jackson Parkway, as well as a 30-foot segment of Anell Drive. That's a portion of Anell Drive that was paved as part of the Joby Jackson project. This property is currently occupied by one single-family residence. It adjoins the city on the west. The areas to the northeast and south are zoned RM, or medium-density residential in the county, and they are used primarily as single-family residential lots. The villas at Baskinwood Town Homes, which is zoned PRD, lies to the west. The plan of services indicates that the city can provide essential services to this property, although water would continue to be provided by CUD. The applicant has not requested a specific zoning designation for this property. It appears to be a speculative annexation. Therefore, if annexed, the property would come into the city with an RS15 zoning designation. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at its January 9th, 2019 meeting and voted to send this forward to you with a favorable recommendation. Staff can answer any questions that you may have before or after the public hearing.
Before I open the public hearing, do we have any questions for Mr. Anthony right If not, we'll open the public hearing. If you have a question or comment, would you come to the podium, give your name, your address, and if you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have five minutes. We'll open the public hearing at this time. If none being said, we will close the public hearing, and at this time, could we get a motion and a second to adopt the plan of services?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye. Now could we get a motion for the adoption of the annexation and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Plan of Services Annexation and Zoning for approximately 21.6 acres located along Veterans Parkway, 2018-513, and 2018-440.
The applicant for this project, Fred Snell, has requested annexation of two parcels totaling approximately 20 acres located along the north side of Veterans Parkway, just west of Barfield Road. Staff has adjusted the annexation request to include an adjacent 500-foot portion of the right-of-way of Veterans Parkway. We've provided a plan of services, which indicates that essential services can be provided to the property. With regard to utilities, CUD would be the water provider, and a step system operated and maintained by the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department would be necessary to accommodate sewage disposal on this site. In addition to the frontage on Veterans Parkway, this property does have street frontage on Christie Charlene Street on the east, that is a county street through the Martha's Haven subdivision. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation request at its January 9th, 2019 meeting and voted to send this item to you with a favorable recommendation. I will have some additional comments on the accompanying rezoning request when that comes up in a few moments. Staff can answer any questions before or after the public hearing on the annexation and plan of services.
Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Anthony before I open the public hearing from the council? If not, we'll open the public hearing, the same rules apply.
Excuse me, just to clarify, is the rezoning going to be a follow-up point to this? Okay, thank you.
It's correct, yeah, right.
If there is none, we'll close the public hearing. And can we get a motion or a comment and a second to adopt the plan of services?
Look for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet? Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye. Any questions or comments? If not, we will request a motion and a second for the annexation.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye. Did you say you had some additional comments?
For the rezoning aspect, yes, ma'am. The applicant has requested rezoning of approximately 20 acres. This is the same property that you just considered. The request is for PUD zoning. This proposed development would be called the cottages at Snell Grove. If approved, the PUD would include 45 single-family residential lots, each having a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. Also included is a commercial area with two commercial structures fronting Veterans Parkway. Surrounding properties are generally in the unincorporated county and are zoned RM, or medium-density residential. The city's land use plan recommends that the property be developed as suburban residential, meaning detached residential with a density of up to 3.54 dwelling units per acre. The proposed PUD has a density of 2.55 dwelling units per acre, and therefore falls within the recommended density range. The commercial development of the PUD is not consistent with the land use plan. However, along a major corridor, it may not be unreasonable to expect neighborhood-level commercial uses. We often find that as roadways expand and as traffic increases on a thoroughfare, those frontages become less desirable for residential development. Ultimately, though, that's up to the council to determine whether this is an appropriate case to veer from the land use plan. The Planning Commission reviewed this request in January and voted to send it to you with a favorable recommendation. Several neighbors spoke at the public hearing at the Planning Commission, and the primary concern, there were multiple concerns, but the primary concern was the connectivity with the Martha's Haven neighborhood via Christie Charlene Street. Rob Mulchan from SEC is here to discuss the request in more detail, and staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Union Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Rob Mulchan, SEC. Here tonight to present to you the villages of Snell Cove. As you can see, the property itself is located at the north side of Veterans Parkway, just to the west of Barfield Road, and that intersection, the signalized intersection there. You can see the property is primarily undeveloped grassland and some woodlands on that side, along with the, with the, more or less, Mr. Snell's property, we're carving off a chunk and leaving five acres or more for him in regards to his existing residents on that side. So we're not taking all of Mr. Snell's, Mr. Snell's not offering up his entire property, he's offering up a portion of it, and that's where we're developing tonight. As Donald talked about, we are, right now, we are zoned RM in the county. As you can see, we are adjacent to RS10 zoning, so we have a direct immediate connection to the city in regards to its property lines on that side, the northwest corner. As Donald talked about, we are, we are looking at in regards to the land use character being suburban residential character. We are within the density ranges and the use types in regards to single-family detached, and with the increase in open space on this project, we fall in line with those. And the neighborhood characteristic of this commercial portion does not fall in line with the current land use plan on that side. But as Donald talked about, we do fall in line with the anticipation of a major roadway expanding over time, and that a commercial entity is a good viable option for that type of frontage along a five-lane arterial roadway. Give you a couple of quick pictures. This is a view of Veterans Parkway from the site looking towards the west. And this is a view of Greenview Drive, which is the street to the west of the property. This is a view of the Christie Charlene stubout towards the property that's on our eastern side of our property line. This is where we're looking at making the connection between the two developments. This is a view of Christie Charlene looking back away from the property line, back into the development itself. It's a view of the end of Suzanne Drive, which is the end of the, Suzanne Drive is where Mr. Snell's driveway accesses his property. This is along the western property line over there. This is the view of his property and his home and his barn. This is a couple of images of some of the homes that surround this. This is one of the homes in Christie Charlene, in Martha's Haven. And this is one of the homes that's adjacent to the property along Veterans Parkway. Proposed plan that we're bringing to you tonight is roughly about 19.94 acres. As you can see here, the development itself is, more or less wraps Mr. Snell's remaining property. Looking at two different components, a residential component, which is primarily 17 and a half acres, and that guards, which is more or less the back portion or the northern portion of the property. And then the remaining portion, that is the small commercial neighborhood development scale-sized development that's about roughly a little over two acres, and that's along Veterans Parkway. Residential itself, we're looking at 45 single-family detached lots, a density of 2.5 units per acre, which again falls in line with the land use character for this area. And we're also talking about 6.08 acres of open space, which is roughly more than twice the amount of required open space provided, that's needed to require with the project on that side. So this also falls in line with the land use character of additional open space. Properties themselves, as Donald talked about, we'll be incorporating a step system in this. This will be a modified step system. More or less, what we're doing with this project and worked out with the water department is to provide a step system that does not have a drip irrigation area on the property. So more or less, these, the step system that we're incorporating, this will be a forced main system, which will pump the water, sewage water down and towards the north and tie into a existing, or soon-to-be-existing sanitary sewer main that's part of the adjacent residential subdivision in River Downs Annex, which is in the northwest corner of the property. As you can see here, this is where we're talking about our connectivity point. As you can see, the proposed sewer line sections in the green up there in the northwest corner, we're providing a sewer connection or easement that's being provided by the developer of River Downs to provide this access back to the gravity sewer from that point there. So our force lines will feed out of the development and back into that gravity flow system and back to the filtration plant. The homes themselves will be a mixture of one- and two-story homes, be primarily, you know, sorry, 1,800 square feet or more in size, they'll be two bedrooms, they lay out two-car front-entry garage structures, and they'll be part of residential HOA. Regards to materials, we mostly cementations, fiber, cementations materials along the fronts, sides will be cementations, fiber board siding. Vinyl will only be permitted in like the trim and soffit areas of the homes themselves. Commercial lot, up against along Veterans Parkway, we'll be looking at two commercial buildings is what our goal is, to create maybe more of a village-type feel in regards to this, so not a strip center, but something more in line with the residential-type character or neighborhood-type character on that side. So a smaller footprint that doesn't, you know, more or less look like a strip center, something that'll tie into the overall residential character that we're proposing behind this, but also be part of an influencing factor in the development of other properties around this neck of the woods in regards to Veterans Parkway as it's being developed out in that point in time. So looking at that, we have no immediate end users at this point in time. We're just, as part of the zoning, trying to move forward with getting the property to a state to where we can start marketing this to potential renters in regards to leasing the space out on that side. These buildings will be maximum two stories, no taller than 35 foot on that side, but we'll have to make certain that whatever type of building or how many square feet will have to be parked in regards to the city codes in regards to parking for that. Building materials, we want to keep these in line with the residential character we're building behind this, so primarily masonry materials. We'll have some small portions of maybe some, you know, metal trim in regards to like awnings or other pieces like that, but primarily masonry-type materials in regards to that character. Give you a couple of character images of some of the feeling, what we want to anticipate is what we feel, the vision of the commercial portion will be in regards to the architecture. As you can see, these images here taken around the area in regards to some of the development types in regards to the structures. Low-key, more neighborhood-y, more neighborhood-esque, more village-type. Enities, as I talked about, we've got roughly, we've got over six acres of open space in regards to this property. As you can see here on those sides, we've got a large green space, which is to the right, which is the northern end of the property. That will be our detention as the property naturally flows from Veterans Parkway back towards the north. Our detention area will be facilitated in the northern end up there. We've also got a couple of the green spaces. As you can see, the one that's in the middle in the north is actually a temporary green space with the anticipation that potentially some point in time, Mr. Snell and/or some other developer could finish up developing his remaining five acres at some point in time, that we would have a stubout to that property that would allow us for adjacent two more lots to be developed in the future if that roadway connection ever did fall out. But for right now, we're providing the standard temporary turnaround in regards to fire access and the safety access on that side. The main portion of our amenity package will be the neighborhood park in the center. As you can see, some of that ideas, some swing sets, some place, you know, the tot lot, some areas for walking and sitting and such like that, for getting out and have some active play outside of your own personal yard on that side. Access to the property, we have two access points that we're proposing tonight. The first access point will be our main, primary connection back to Veterans Parkway. And there on the southern end of the property, the left-hand side of the screen, that will be a three-lane cross-section, providing a single lane inbound and two lanes out, or right and left, back on the Veterans Parkway for ease of access in and out of the site on that side. Our secondary point of ingress that we're proposing tonight is the connection to the stubout on the eastern property line, which is the stubout to Christie Charlene Street, which is part of the Martha's Haven subdivision. That is our secondary access point from the standpoint of making a connection from the health, safety, welfare aspect of what the city promotes in regards to stubbing and connecting to any adjacent stubbing streets to a property that's being developed on that side. I appreciate your time and consideration of this development tonight. If you have any questions, I'm here now or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Any questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
I have a question for Mr. Anthony, but anybody needs Mr. Mulchan first?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anthony, is it possible for us with this piece of property right here, I can't tell really what's going on with the end of Hideaway Lane right there. It doesn't look like a cul-de-sac, and it doesn't look like it stubs out, but could we not stubout to Hideaway Lane?
No, I believe that if I, and it is difficult to see, I'm sorry, under that, but I believe that there are residential lots there that that is a cul-de-sac, actually.
Oh, okay, so it's just going to be a cul-de-sac? You know, these other ones have a circle, you know, in the cul-de-sac?
Right.
On our lot plat, not on this map you're looking at, but on the, like, the lot plat?
I understand. I, I believe that is-
Is there a way that somebody might be able to find that for sure? You know that, Mr. Mulchan?
The adjacent, if you're talking the portion there on the highway there, that portion of that development for River Downs Annex actually came through Planning Commission last month in regards to the actual subdivision on that portion. So that is a, more or less, a knuckle or a bulb there that has lots wrapping the entire portion of that. So it does not allow for a stub back to that, back to our property line on that side. So that's, a site plan came through and got approved last month in regards to that platting of those lots.
Planning Commission?
Yes.
That's already, okay, thank you. I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, but I mean, that's already city property with city roads. Maybe the other stubout is better suited to get a little, you know, out in other city roads instead of connected to a county road if it's, I mean, if it has, if that had site plan, well, that site plan won't come through us, though, will it?
Correct. And I think that may have been a preliminary plat, actually, so that wouldn't come to the city council. The other opportunity for connectivity, it's still to a county road, but it's on the other side of the development, is the one called Suzanne Drive, and it is right here. And so if at some point in the future, the remainder of this property developed, that could provide another access. But again, that would be back to a county road through a county neighborhood.
The person who lives in that residence right there is the person who is potentially developing or selling this property that we're talking about tonight, right?
That is correct.
And they're not willing to give a stubout through their property?
That is correct. We actually, during the review of this project, we asked that this be included, even, even if it's not necessarily part of a current development, we thought if we could still see it and sort of plan for it in the future, but apparently, the applicant was not able to work that out with the seller to allow that to be included.
But the applicant is the seller, right?
The, yes, in so many ways. I believe that for the, for the plan development itself, we have, we have a separate, a separate applicant, yes.
Oh, was it the applicant for the annexation was the owner?
Correct.
But the zoning is the applicant as the developer?
Correct.
Sorry, I saw that, okay, all right.
Any other comments?
I got one more before we get started with the, with the neighbors out here, I'm sorry. Just trying to think through this a little bit, get a little framework in my mind here. Now, I read the comments at, at the Planning Commission, so I'm assuming they're going to be fairly similar. The, the possible future of what may happen here, as well as kind of just the layout of this thing? How many neighborhoods are there in the city of Murfreesboro that have one ingress and egress?
There are too many, quite a few.
A bunch?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if I would say a bunch, but, but I mean, to a plan or any is too many.
Yeah, all right.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll open the public hearing, and the same rules apply.
My name is Kyle Schilling. I live at 1,004 Christie Charlene Street, and that is in the Martha's Haven neighborhood. I serve as president of the Martha's Haven HOA. And first, I want to thank you all for your service to the community and for taking your time this evening to hear the concerns of its residents. I also want to thank the folks behind me. Many of them are going to speak this evening, and many are very nervous to do so, so go easy on them. But I think that alone speaks volumes about how serious they take this matter. They would not typically do this, but they're so passionate, they will come up tonight and speak. The next thing I would like to do is to hand out a packet to you. The packet you have now will outline many of our comments this evening. A similar packet was provided at the Planning Commission public hearing, though I did notice that it was not included in the annexation report for tonight's agenda, but it was very similar. And so by now, many of you probably understand why we're here and understand that we have serious concerns about the secondary egress proposed with this development specifically to Christie Charlene Street. While as residents, we certainly understand, and we actually agree with the motives and reasons behind multiple egresses and entrances to a neighborhood, this is not a legal requirement, and so we're asking you to weigh the concerns of that secondary egress with the desire to have it. Martha's Haven is a county subdivision, as we've understood. It currently enjoys safe traffic patterns for both vehicles and pedestrians, and none of the amenities or upgrades that you're asking the city streets to have are included or exist on this road, Christie Charlene Street. Because the city and county deemed it unnecessary to conduct a traffic study, we've heard it several times, we did our best as a neighborhood to gather traffic information for you. For instance, on Barfield Road, just on a typical Sunday afternoon, traffic will back up for approximately 25 to 30 minutes, all the way up to a mile north of the Veterans Light. This approximates 110 to 120 vehicles in stop-and-go traffic typically stopped during that 30 minutes. During an average traffic light cycle, 13 cars proceed through the Veterans Light. If you calculate this out, it's a singular but common event that occurs multiple times during the week, multiple times during the day. And if you calculate it out, we estimate that 100 to 150 of those vehicles will cut through the Christie Charlene Road to avoid the streetlight. Once the cut-through is available, we know that even more drivers will choose that route because they no longer have to wait in line. And while this is one small set of data, we have other pieces of data that we'll present tonight, and the larger picture is even more concerning, because once businesses are there, the convenience store that is going to be located on the corner that you may or may not even know about, more traffic will come. I personally watch several cars a day from my residence in Martha's Haven try to come into our neighborhood, find out that it's not a through street, and turn right back around and go out. While local government is often frustrating for the public, this process has been particularly discouraging, as no change has occurred to this plan since we first brought these concerns to the planning department almost five months ago. Our ask tonight is very simple. We'll present multilayered information and testimonials to make it clear that the full impact of the second egress and the extension of Christie Charlene Street by, by nature has been misunderstood, downplayed, and it needs to be removed from the proposal. We ask, please don't rubber-stamp this decision, hear us out, and truly hear our concerns. Put yourself in our shoes as not just residents, but fathers and mothers with children on the streets, children riding bicycles, and walking to our neighbors' homes. Thank you in advance for your time and support this evening.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Thomas. I live at 1,123 Christie Charlene Street. While the Planning Commission ultimately voted to approve this plan, it is important to note that the Planning Commission voted based on meeting criteria of the city guidelines and regulations, not the specific impact to current residents. It is your duty as city council to judge and manage the impact on residents outside the planning requirements. With that, I would like to address the inconsistencies and omissions in the annexation report provided to you this week. First, this is a county road.
Sorry, so sorry.
That's okay.
He's my timekeeper.
Still for Kyle, Mr. Schilling, sorry, I was getting him out of there, I'm sorry, just kidding.
So this is a county road that we live on. The report states that Christie Charlene stub connection will provide access back to Barfield Road from this development, thus the plan literally calls out that this becomes a cut-through. Regarding the proposed subdivision street, the report states, "These streets will be built in accordance with the Murfreesboro street standards." The hypocrisy in the statement is maddening. If it is so critical that the streets will be in accordance with the city standards, why is it insignificant that the adjoining street will not meet any of these standards? Mr. Mulchon stated that the difference between city, the city road and the county road on Christie Charlene is about two feet in width. It's actually eight feet, so four feet on each side, which is quite a bit more than he stated, and much, much more concerning. Unfortunately, this falsehood downplays the significance of the intersection between the neighborhoods. Ms. Kathy Joan asked Mr. Huddelson if there was any way to determine or calculate possible traffic that would use Christie Charlene Street as a cut-through. Mr. Huddelson explained that the traffic study was unnecessary due to the size of the development. Mr. Huddelson explained that typically drivers take the path of least resistance, and that this is why staff believes that the cut-through traffic will not be a consistent problem. But this is precisely the problem, with the misunderstanding of cut-through traffic. Christie Charlene traffic is not just from New Salem residents, more significantly will come from the stub extension created by non-residents as well that are cutting through to avoid the light. The definition of a cut-through is literally the path of least resistance, so for Mr. Huddelson to claim drivers would choose to wait at a light then use a cut-through is utterly ridiculous. Martha's Haven is the path of least resistance, and drivers will choose to go that way, excuse me, instead of the light. Most concerningly, the information provided by our HOA at the Planning Commission meeting hearing was not included in tonight's meeting. For all of these reasons, it is clear that you did not receive the full picture at hand, and that is why we felt it was important to come here tonight and to speak in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Hello, Jeremy Canar, 1000 Christie Charlene Street. From the city Planning Commission hearing, it was clear there was a disagreement on the true impact of the secondary egress as it relates to, number one, the likelihood and amount of traffic that will cut through Martha's Haven, and, two, the safety impact of this traffic on vehicles, residents, and children. So number one, traffic will cut through Martha's Haven along Christie Charlene Street. Cut-through traffic will come from many different sources. We've demonstrated that events such as post-traffic will cause frequent backups. Similar events occur nearly every afternoon for post-work and school traffic. At these times, cars will back up north of Barfield Veterans Light. On average, these cars must wait through at least three stoplights, which results in about a 5.5-minute wait for cars. Cars will choose to cut through Martha's Haven to avoid this wait. This, of course, occurs at times when many of our residents utilize the Christie Charlene Street for outdoor recreation. Children in particular ride their bikes and play, using the road to visit their friends, go to neighbors' houses. The road is their only option of travel due to the fact that we have no sidewalks or any other, any other way for them to travel. This is a minimum of about 50 cars a day in the short period, and, I mean, it leaves us no option if this occurs. For the most safety, we would be probably forced to keep our children in home and out of the roads. Additional traffic will clearly come from the residents of the cottages, who will choose to cut through the road. That way, they will be able to proceed north onto Barfield Road without getting on the Veterans and having to go through the light. While this may seem like a small number, you know, it's likely to triple our current traffic along Christie Charlene Street, proposing additional 60 to 80 drivers making that trip multiple times throughout the day. And as you notice, the proposed plan also has public businesses included. These businesses will also bring in additional traffic into this area that nobody is able to predict for. Much of this traffic will possibly cut through Martha's Haven, both north and southbound, and contrary to the Planning Commission's statements, drivers coming south down Barfield will not choose to sit at the light, nor will drivers leaving these businesses choose to exit out onto Veterans and wait through that traffic light to go back north. So drivers will choose to cut through our neighborhood, and no one can really predict how much this will impact our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canar.
My name is Rachel Carney. My family and I reside at Christie Charlene Street, but it is 1107 Christie Charlene Street. We also are blessed to have the youngest child in the neighborhood, who is 14 months old, so I am representing him as well as my husband tonight. We currently have 24 homes within Martha's Haven. There are 24 households who understand the existing safety concerns of Christie Charlene Street, and Christie Charlene Street has no streetlights, no bike paths, no sidewalks, no curbs, no shoulders. It has no, it has a very large, large safety concern where the drainage ditch exists. And I personally, almost daily, they can protest this, I walk my son and stroll him daily, and if this is decided, that's gonna have to stop, which is heartbreaking for us. The children in the neighborhood, they play in their front yards, they ride their bikes, they also love walking back and forth through the houses. Everybody knows everyone, that's our community that we have, which is a blessing. But at night, the roads are just straight-out dangerous, very dangerous, because of the lack of lighting. When we get down to it, the heart of the matter is that the Planning Department of this site, the city of Murfreesboro Design Guidelines, Section C, actually talks about connectivity. In fact, the Planning Commission quoted one of these design guidelines in the public hearing. In quotes, it says, "Streets shall connect to the existing sub-streets and adjacent properties." The next statement in the guidelines, however, was not mentioned. It states, in quotes, "Where possible and practical, multiple access points to developments shall be provided for emergency safety access," in quotes. It does not reference the need of traffic thorough through. Does that not make you concerned? Additionally, the guidelines state, in quotes, "All streets shall be properly integrated with existing and proposed systems of streets." In contrast, the City of Murfreesboro Subdivision Regulations, Section 5.78, Traffic Calming Devices, states, in quotes, "New residential streets should be arranged so to discourage cut-through traffic and high speeds. Vehicular efficiency should be balanced against the needs of pedestrians, cyclists in the residential areas." Speaking of us, me, every day with my 14-month-old son. So plainly stated in the city's own regulations, the benefit of this sub-extension needs to be weighed against the impact it has on vehicular, pedestrian, and bike safety. Whether you believe this extension will increase the traffic by 10 cars or 1,000 cars, an accident takes just one car. A vote to approve the secondary egress through Martha's Haven will exponentially increase the likelihood that an accident occurs along Christie Charlene Street. An approval vote, oh, man, an approval vote states that you may care for the residential areas in the city, but not for our county, and I don't believe that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Adam Carney, that's my wife Rachel there. She's definitely the more bullish of the two of us, I think. I'm one of the ones that is not a public speaker, so do bear with me a little bit while I stumble through this, I'll try not to stumble too bad. So it's important to note that a stub connection is not in fact a requirement. The city Planning Department wants an additional egress, but doesn't need the egress. In fact, this very language was used by the planning staff at the public hearing. Mr. Donald Anthony stated, quote, "Staff would want connections made to both Suzanne Drive and Christie Charlene Street." We wholeheartedly agree that secondary egresses are good practice and should be implemented when possible. However, not all situations are equal or practical, and we know this is one situation in which the daily safety of the county and city residents will be impacted so significantly that it outweighs the chance a secondary egress would be needed in the time of emergency. Many neighborhoods exist with just one entrance, and neither city or county are rushing to install second entrances in those neighborhoods. In fact, Martha's Haven has actually existed for nearly 15 years and still has but one If you must, put a secondary egress along Veterans, which will not create a cut-through through any neighborhood. Precedent was actually set recently when the Planning Commission and city council approved the Tuscany development off West Thompson Lane. You may recall this development was built upon land owned by the former planning director, Mr. Joseph Adalot. This neighborhood is nearly identical in specs to the proposed Snell Cove development. The council approved that development with just one entrance onto one of the busiest streets in Murfreesboro. We're simply asking for the same consideration. The demand to an egress on Christie Charlene with such a negative impact on the neighborhood simply doesn't pass the smell test. Another example of similar situation is the West Wind subdivision on Veterans. This is a city subdivision that had one egress for the initial phase. It appears it will ultimately have two egresses, though just 330 feet apart, and both along Veterans. The last thing I'll say, I don't know how I am on time, my wife got a little emotional, she's actually a testament to one car causing the accident.
About 50 seconds.
Okay. She's a traumatic brain injury survivor. She was struck by a car when she was nine. She probably couldn't stand up here and say that because she'd get a little bit too emotional. So certainly, one car can make a difference, let alone the hundreds that might be coming through our neighborhood as a cut-through. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marsha Lowe, and I live at 205 John Paul Court in the Martha's Haven subdivision. I'd like to address the dead-end or the stub of Christie Charlene Street. If one's argument for constructing the right of egress is simply that stub exists, therefore we must extend it, this really doesn't pass the common sense test. If the stub did not exist, I feel confident that the city would most probably still approve this new development without access to Christie Charlene Street. We wish to remind you that the stub was put there by the county, not the city, with intent to extend the existing Martha's Haven neighborhood nearly 15 years ago. In speaking with county representative, they said that they have no problem with us converting this stub to a cul-de-sac. Thus, both neighborhoods could maintain some privacy, and there would be no cut-through traffic. Me, problem solved. Now, the new neighborhood is not going to be less desirable because Christie Charlene is not extended. Yes, the design guidelines recommend extending stubs when they exist, but the guidelines and common sense say that every situation should be evaluated on its own merit, and I do hope that you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jerry Bolden, I live at 211 John Paul Court. We talk about the secondary egress is really unlikely to be used for an emergency. While we support a secondary egress, we should also point out that this doesn't solve the problem you think it does. The likelihood that an entrance is blocked is so minute that every emergency personnel we spoke with could not provide an example of such a situation. In reality, an entrance is a tiny percentage of the overall neighborhood space, so the chances that a blockage occurs at an entrance is actually quite small. A blockage will most likely occur within the neighborhood, and unless the neighborhood is a full loop, which this one is not, it won't matter how many entrances you construct. In contrast, the likelihood that a driver will hit a pedestrian or crash their car on the curb along Christie Charlene while rushing to cut through and avoid a traffic light is very probable. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dino Raffo, and my husband Greg and I, along with our two sons, Lucas, 16, and Gabriel, 12, live at 1205 Christie Charlene Street. The small and quiet neighborhood that Martha's Haven provides was the primary factor we chose to relocate more than three years ago. From a home on a busy street in a big neighborhood to our current home, you see, our younger son, Gabe, has autism. He gets hyper-focused on his activities and is often unaware of his surroundings, and he knows little fear. Martha's Haven is a safe place for Gabe to play outside, ride his bike and skateboard. Our neighbors drive slowly and with caution, looking out for pedestrians, bike riders, and children who may run into the street to go after a ball. Gabe's getting older and looks more like a teenager now, yet he does not have the same judgment, awareness, or understanding of potential hazardous situation as a typical kid his age. This is a long-term issue for our family, as he will continue to have these challenges into his teenage years and even into adulthood. Greg and I are very concerned about Gabe's safety should Christie Charlene become a through street. We're at the very end of the street where the transition between neighborhoods will be most hazarded due to the road width differences. In Martha's Haven, Gabe enjoys a childhood where we can allow him a reasonable amount of independence to play outside without concern for his safety. Should the current plan develop, we will not be able to allow Gabe to ride his bike, skateboard, or walk to a neighbor's home, even as a teenager. Gabe's safety and all of our children's safety is at risk by extending Christie Charlene. I'm asking that you not make our road a through street and redesign alternative solutions to the current plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kristin Gibson, and I live at 1112 Christie Charlene, along with my husband, our 11-year-old son, and five-year-old daughter. Tonight, we offer four solutions to the safety concerns of this secondary egress. Solution number one, simply utilize one egress. The Tuscany neighborhood off Thompson Lane was recently approved by the city council. It has just one egress and a similar number of residents to Snell Cove. Many other neighborhoods in this city and county have just one entrance. Solution number two, the city could require the landowner and developer to include a second egress off Suzanne Drive. The road already exists and makes logical sense as a secondary egress. Mr. Snell simply wants to keep his private road while forcing this egress onto Martha's Haven. He has the right to request this, although it seems illogical. On the contrary, the city has a right to demand otherwise and require use of Suzanne Drive. As Mr. Snell has intentions to sell the remainder of his land as a Phase Two in about two years, the city will then have the opportunity to add a secondary egress at Suzanne Drive. Solution number three, add a second entrance along Veterans within the cottages at Snell Cove neighborhood. The drive already exists to service the business, it simply needs to be extended into the neighborhood. This is minimal work from a redesign standpoint. A similar neighborhood with this design exists just 1.7 miles west along Veterans Parkway. The West Wind neighborhood has one entrance off Veterans and is adding a second entrance merely 330 feet away. This neighborhood sits closer to St. Andrews Drive than Snell Cove will be to the Barfield Light. Adding a second entrance off Veterans into Snell Cove would be roughly 335 feet away from the proposed Veterans egress. And solution number four, if for some reason we have not yet convinced you to revise these plans and the dangerous cut-through is approved by the city council, our community passionately demands an emergency access gate installation at the intersection of the neighborhoods. This will serve as a secondary emergency entrance- This will serve as a secondary emergency entrance and will also serve as a traffic calming device that our residents demand and our children deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Lowe. I live at two oh five John Paul Court. My driveway entrance is off of Christie Charlene, and you'll be delighted to know that I'm the last one to speak tonight. You've heard all the reasons why we feel like that this connection should not be made: safety, security, um, health. But I'm convinced that if any one of you, any one of you lived in Martha's Haven subdivision and you knew what we know about the traffic on Barfield Road, and you experienced it on a daily basis, that I have no doubt that you would take the same position that we're taking tonight. So you've heard the reasons why we feel like that this second entrance is not needed. You've heard that if you deem it is necessary, there are other alternatives that you can take without connecting to this Martha's Haven subdivision. So this council is here for a reason, we know, to exercise good judgment and wisdom in these situations. So we hope that you will not be a rubber stamp to this, and that you will, uh, let your wisdom show and, uh, require the Planning Commission or the planners and the architects to seek another alternative other than Christie Charlene Street. So we thank you for the opportunity tonight to be with you, and we hope that we have gained your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the council?
I'll make a couple of comments just real quick. Um, you know, one thing that I think we're seeing here is probably one of the challenges of squeezing a city development in between two or three, however you want to look at it, county developments, you know, where you have different requirements, different road structure. I will say one thing, I think I'd be correct with someone who made a comment about the difference in the road size. I think that's the right-of-way size, so I think the road is actually just slightly smaller. The right-of-way then includes the sidewalks. I don't think the road would be eight feet wider, but, um, I, so just to kind of, you might check with staff about that afterwards, okay? But, you know, look, I'll make a comment too about the second egress. I started being a City Council person, whatever it was, five and a half, almost six years ago, and six years ago in a day, I would've told you there is absolutely no reason for a second egress into a neighborhood. I didn't believe it. I didn't like it. And today, I would tell you that it's one of those things that I would frame it this way: when it's important, it's really important. I mean, when you literally can't get an ambulance to your house to take care of your kid because there's no other way to get in the neighborhood, it's a big dang deal. So, you know, the idea of having a second ingress and egress is a real thing, and I just want to make sure that you kind of know, that's not just some kind of, oh, it's some city code, and we just like it because we're, you know, trying to make something happen that's not really the right thing. I mean, it's a real thing, and it has happened. I can promise you, if you ask the right people, they'll give you some examples real fast. The tornado, the flooding, I mean, that we had just lasted a couple, a couple weeks ago was the difference, not the tornado a couple weeks ago, the flooding a couple weeks ago was the difference in people trying, you know, being able to get to work or get emergency services to their house or not. I mean, that's just very recent examples. So it is important. Now, on the same token, I'm gonna say that I'm disappointed that we wouldn't have structured this. If the timing wasn't right, it's very close to try to get out on Hideaway, but I think there's a low area back there and maybe even a, uh, some, some, yeah, it's, but that may be, there may be a little creek. I can see the, I think I can see the, um, the creek structure here in the, in the satellite map, which might make that difficult to get all the way back to Hideaway Lane, but, um, I'd be in favor of some sort of traffic calming scenario. We, you know, once we get into the county roads, we can't do it, but, um, you know, for me, probably to, to be in favor of this, I'd probably want to see some sort of traffic calming, whether or not that'd be a speed bump right there at the, the, the edge, right where this road would connect to Christie Charlene, or two, or a gate, or something, um, or potentially, let's just see. Mr. Anthony, I'll just ask one question. I'll, I'll wrap up my, my comments. The reason that we're putting a city development in the midst of two county developments is what?
We have a property owner who has asked that.
Why would that, why would that be the case generally?
Hmm, to be able to, to sell their property, to be able to market their, their property.
As city?
As, as city.
They're gonna get any different water, I mean, they're gonna get police and fire service for sure, right?
Mm-hmm.
Are they gonna get the same water or different water?
Uh, they'll be getting CUD water, um, but they'll get a little bit, they'll get more density from the city. That would be one thing. Um, I think the mixed use aspect is something that the city can offer.
Solid waste pickup? I'll get solid waste.
Certainly.
Solid waste, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before you sit down, Mr. Anthony, could you speak to each of the alternatives? Do you have a copy of this?
Um, I, I do remember seeing it at the Planning Commission. I don't have it in front of me though.
Alternatives solutions, could you speak to each one of those?
Um, I will. I think that, um, I think I took notes. You may have to, to help me through. Um, the first would be to use one egress, um, I believe is one of the, one of the things that was mentioned. We simply as staff wouldn't support that, um, that, that would violate our design guidelines as well as the subdivision regulations. The second, using Suzanne Drive, I think, um, if we, if we connected to Suzanne Drive, you would be hearing the same argument from residents on Suzanne Drive that you're hearing from the residents on Christie Charlene. So, um, the way that the application was brought to us, there is no opportunity at this point to connect to Suzanne Drive. If there was, we would go for it, and, and we would want to require it, but there's not at this point, so we're, um...
Can I make a comment about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just before we finish up, I mean, the, the one main difference is, you're not, you don't have a major road that you can cut through to. You get a secondary egress, but, you know, when I look at this right here, I'll just be honest with you, all that keeps popping into my mind is, uh, coming in off Medical Center Parkway off the interstate, you ever sat out right in the Chamber parking lot? You know, the number of people who turn left into the Chamber parking lot and zoom around the parking lot where they put about six speed bumps in there, because the number of people that tried to avoid the light at Thornton's to get over to Wilkerson, Wilkinson Bike, I mean, that's all I can sit here and look at, is that every time the lights red at Veterans and Barfield, they're just gonna want to cut through and get over to Barfield and try to beat it out. Um, that's, sorry, but that, that's why it would be different, and I, I mean, I, it kind of gripes me a little bit that the person who's applying for this, trying to sell the property, is not willing to even consider having, you know, part of this property, at least in the future, available to do this. Sorry.
No, that's okay. And, and, and as I pointed out earlier, that is something that we, that we asked from the, from the beginning. Adding another driveway on Veterans, there are currently two driveways shown on Veterans. One would just serve the, the commercial development. Um, there's not enough, there's simply not enough road frontage to get another, um, another driveway from, from Veterans into this property.
Can you connect that access back into the development?
So it, it does. It actually wraps around and gets back into that thoroughfare that would go through the development. Um, it does not go straight through into the residential development. You would drive through the, the, um, parking lot of the commercial development and then simply get back to the, to the road.
Second access, it would be a...
That absolutely is a second access, yes. The, the, and I apologize, I'm gonna pull up the plan if that's okay.
Right here.
So where, where that would, Councilman Shacklet, where that would come in would be right, right here. If you came in through the secondary access, you would come through the parking lot, and then you would come in here. What I would suggest is that that's maybe three hundred feet or so, um, and so that's helpful, but if your obstruction occurs just a little bit beyond that, if there's some obstruction just a little bit beyond that, then, then it's still, um, you could have one, two, five, or ten going back to Veterans Parkway, and they would still, um, you'd still be in the same situation if some obstruction occurred a little bit further along than the three hundred feet. And then the, the other suggestion was an emergency access gate. We, we tend to not want to do that on, on public streets. We've had experience with blockages on public streets, and it has not been, um, they have not been pleasant experiences, so that's not something we would advocate for.
I think our emergency people have said that is not necessarily a good solution. We've tried that solution a couple of times, and it has been a, a real difficult, uh, for them. And we've battled that. It may put off a little dealing with this issue, but it causes more down the road. I, I'm wondering about that second access, though, not being, I, I don't really see the problem with that being an additional access through the commercial, uh, and considering that, uh, the second access that we have. I, I realize the short distance between there. I have some planning background and understand the short distances, but if we wanted to grant that as a second access until the, the develop, I mean, the property owner realizes that, you know, I mean, I'm kind of like, uh, Mr. Delance, I'm concerned that the, the person requesting this doesn't want to be in the city, but wants his property that he's selling to be in the city. Uh, you know, if you, I mean, I'd, I'd rather see that property owner say, "I, I realize my responsibility to come along with this development," and, uh, so anyway, I guess I'm a little, I'm, I'm trying to find a way that this doesn't impact this neighborhood. By the way, I want to just compliment you, uh, the group that came tonight. Uh, we, we see a lot of, uh, communities trying to make their case. Uh, you did it in a, in a very succinct manner. It was not redundant with people saying the same thing time after time, and I appreciate the, the effort that you put into coming and representing your, uh, neighborhood.
What if we, uh, what if we stub out right there in the, in the open space, and then if the, if the owner ever does develop, you know, stub out to the west, looking at it the wrong way, but I think the west, right there where the little walk-in trail is? What if we just stub out there? You guys, there, you, gives you another lot in there in between number three and number four, and if this ever develops to the west, you gotta stub out right to Suzanne. I mean, that, it's no different than when we stub something out to a blank piece of property anyway, that just, just in case it ever develops, that happens all the time, like the Tuscany deal, there's a stub on the back, so there is a possible second ingress, but it stubs to nowhere.
And again, Tuscany is a private development with a gated entrance, so it's probably, it's not a public street, it's a private set of streets down in Tuscany, so it's different than, you know...
I mean, we don't care about them.
Correct. I mean, there, there is...
We want them to have emergency services.
They, they could have emergency access and/or actually a gated entrance to that side and that side if the property north of that development does. I mean, that's what we said it there when we, when we designed that development, was the opportunity that, hey, in the means of the same thing as with Martha Haven, at some point in time when that land in the north is gonna expand, then there's an opportunity for us to provide a secondary access.
What I'm saying is, we do the same thing to the west. Instead of stubbing out to the east, we stub out to the west.
And our, our plan right here, based on, you know, the land that Mr. Snell is providing to my client on that side, and Mr. Snell is not involved in this deal other than he's selling the property to my client, that we've provided that stub or that temporary cul-de-sac with the anticipation that either Mr. Snell or some other developer, or even my client, if the land, land was offered to him, would be able to take and extend that temporary cul-de-sac out and tie in and take a T back to Suzanne on that side. So that would be an opportunity. That's why we're not negating the fact of ever trying to get into Suzanne, but Mr. Snell's not offering that portion of the land right now because he's trying to preserve the tree row that's in front of his house. If and when the time came that he sells that to, you know, another developer, or even tries to, approaches my client on that side and lets us, asks us to finish developing the rest of his property when he's ready to move off the land, we're providing that stub for the connection back to Suzanne at some point in time in the future. We just can't get to it today, but we're providing that stub.
My point was just saying, for example, and there, I think there's examples of this everywhere, but since they brought up the Tuscany thing, I'll bring it up again, that stub goes to the just-in-case-whatever one day also.
Correct.
And, and we, we think, we think that that's okay for their safety. And so what I'm saying is, we've got a, a possible extra way out of here without stubbing through to a county road that doesn't have any lights, doesn't have any sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. You guys probably get another lot that you can stick right there. I mean, why don't we just...
I mean, you know, from our standpoint, and my, from my client's standpoint in regards to development, we're, we go either way with how this goes. I mean, because we're, we're just providing what the city standard is in regards to connectivity between developments, whether that's a city, city or a city-county development, we're providing that second level of safety on that side. Granted, I understand the Tuscany situation, yeah, it's a one-in, one-way-in, one-way-out deal, there's lots of developments in the city there that way on that side. We're just always trying to be more proactive than we were in the past in regards to good city planning on that side and trying to work with what the city mandates or asks us to do.
And I'm just trying to figure out other...
Right, and I think, yeah, the Suzanne thing is definitely a viable option, it's just that right now, Mr. Snell's not offering that land up for us to make that connection, but there is that opportunity, and we're providing that opportunity by stubbing that out with a temporary cul-de-sac, you know, it's certain, because for us, it's a benefit if that land ever did develop, because we get two more lots to add to the development on that side, too, because that temporary cul-de-sac right now is eating up lot forty-four and forty-five. So, you know, that's two lots that we've gotta sit on for X amount of years until Mr. Snell develops, or whoever develops that land opens up that corridor for us to connect that thing through on that side. So, you know, it's a benefit for us to get that connection to come through, but the land that isn't there today on that side. So, you know, the highway connection back there, elaborate more on that side, Mr. Lance, that, you know, that plat that came through is a knuckle, and the reason that's a knuckle is because they have detention on the backside of that, so, so that's, it's, the grades coming down to that creek that we're, yeah, so that, as you come off that street, that connection, that knuckle there, they've got lots, and behind those lots, all those lots fall off to a, to a, to a storm drainage, a storm detention pond back there on that side, so...
Okay, yep, sorry, it just looked like it would make sense, but...
Yeah, it, it, obviously, it, it does. I mean, the original plan before the plan that's been brought forth today did have a cul-de-sac in that development over there, the, you know, so it was planned to be a cul-de-sac, but they actually moved the cul-de-sac backwards because the original development for that area didn't require stormwater drainage back there, because the standards changed after that original plan was done. They had to come back and turn it into a knuckle instead of a cul-de-sac because the drainage had to go back there on that side, so...
I'll make just a few comments. Obviously, when this came through planning, um, so I've, I've seen some of the residents that have come and, and addressed planning, and thanks for coming again tonight. I live in Puckett Station, which has, um, today, and it has for the past ten years or so, one single access point to get out of there, and there are probably two hundred townhouses and two hundred or more homes in that subdivision, and it's a mess to get in and out of. I would have a very difficult time, even if it were my property, um, not wanting connectivity to our streets, uh, for all the reasons that I think we know and want, not only from emergency services, which are important, but from the standpoint that the more veins and arteries we have connecting streets and roads, um, the better traffic can filter through the county and the city. Now, if I were a resident in, in Martha's Haven and I thought I could prevent that from happening, I, I don't blame you for wanting to do that. Uh, I would want the same thing if I were trying to protect my, my little piece of, of paradise that I had, so I, I respect that totally. But the, these, and I think these are the comments I made in planning, and this is just my opinion, but, you know, we've got forty-three houses we're looking at here today that the impact we make on connecting to your subdivision does impact, um, their connectivity to the roads and their access being a single access point. So I'm as sensitive to those people as I am you coming here today. I'm not insensitive to you, but that's certainly important. Um, the, the, um, Martha's Haven development, obviously, your lot sizes are a lot larger than what are being built in the subdivision. Uh, you have, um, significant green space there, there is less so for the, for the density in this. Will there be some people that will cut through to avoid that intersection at Veterans and Barfield? I'm, I'm sure there will be. But a lot of things, and, and I'm brand new at this, um, and so as I'm learning, one of the things that I'm continuing to learn is that there's behavioral patterns that we all learn as we travel, and just like you all in your neighborhoods have learned to be slow, cautious drivers, I think it's reasonable to assume that people that would come through there would realize that you've got a dangerous curve in that subdivision, and, and it is a place to slow down. But you all are obviously a, a very close group. I think if you had someone move your subdivision, out of your subdivision and come in, you can't control a, a renegade teenager from driving in and out of there, flying and putting your children at risk in the same way that these people next door to you might put your... children at risk in the same way that these people next door to you might put your children at risk. And all of our children are at risk as they're on roads without sidewalks and maybe sidewalks included. So I appreciate you being here. I'm still in support of the connectivity because I think it's good for the city overall, but I do respect the fact that it's probably not great for you.
What about the options of speed bumps and things that slow traffic down? Is that?
I'm going to ask Mr. Sam Holston to come speak to those things.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Scales Harris and members of the council. Mr. Shacklet, we do have a traffic calming program, as many as through the Public Works Department. I quite suspect Mr. Griffith might have been a better choice to talk to us a little bit about that, but there are some tools in our toolbox for traffic calming. Starts with design, obviously, because you can design in a lot more traffic calming than we can go back and retrofit. So one of the statements I think we made at Planning Commission on this was, the street patterns there, while they do allow cut-through, they are circuitous in nature, so it creates starts and stops and turns that help with traffic calming. The other ideas that we would have, we would look at that toolbox and see what's appropriate at this location or in these areas for that traffic calming.
Just to let you know, why I got you up there, just to make sure I'm clear on something. This, when you come in this particular development off of Veterans Parkway, if you hang a left, I can't read it, Street something, you hang a left.
B.
Yeah, okay. And then that goes into a right-hand turn and it ends right there. Why would we not consider that a second ingress and egress potential for the future?
You talking about the temporary cul-de-sac or the?
Temporary cul-de-sac. The, yeah.
Yes, and I think, if I recall, Mr. Moltan described that to us, that that street can be extended where Suzanne Drive to be extended, that could be, and that would create an opportunity to the west. I think the challenge we've got with Christie-Charlene Court in our subdivision regs is it's a stub street and we still need to deal with the condition of that stub street. And our subdivision regulations say to us that stub streets that extend to your property should be extended into your property. And so that creates a dilemma for us, being a secondary access or not, it's still a stub street into this property, and it was on purpose planned that way to be extended at some point in the future. So we've still got the dilemma of dealing with the stub street of Christie-Charlene Court.
The only, and look, there's part of me, and I'm, you know, y'all please understand, I'm, I, we just got to get to some points here, so I got to just say what I got to say. I mean, look, if I moved in that neighborhood and I saw that stub street, I would expect there's going to be a street there, you know, there's going to be more houses back in there. The part of it that, you know, so I get that, and I would think that that's, you know, that should be expected before I bought the house. You know, the difference is, by us annexing this, doing this as a city subdivision, not only is there a lot more houses than what I probably would have expected because of the number that are coming in here, I would have thought it's going to maybe look somewhat similar to my neighborhood. There's also going to be commercial, and it's also going to tie you over there to Veterans Parkway, which I may not have known or expected had I not been doing this for a little while. So I guess, you know, what I'm trying to get at here is, the county, you know, going from county to city, that's why I said this, that seems to make this a little more difficult because I'm not sure it makes as much sense for that statement that you made, that's in our code or our policy or whatever, you know, to extend a stub-out street, I'm not sure that makes as much sense when you're going for, from a county road into now a city subdivision, when they're all residential, no lights, no sidewalks, all that. I just don't think it makes quite as much sense to me personally. But anyway, for me, I just think it's good enough to have a second stub-out over here where the temporary turnaround is, and let's get on with it. I, I mean, I'll tell you right now, I can approve this, I'll be in favor of this. If we count that as the second stub-out, we scrap this deal, they get another lot, I move on, I'm good, otherwise I'll abstain.
And so I would point out one thing, the density that is proposed here is 2.5 dwelling units per acre. Typical county subdivision with 15,000 square foot lots will yield about two, two and a quarter units per acre. So the density question, I think, is probably fairly balanced, the idea that it connects to.
There's no way there'd be that many houses if that's county.
The, I'm just saying, a typical RS, RS, or an R-15, which is the minimum lot size in the county.
Yeah, but.
Will yield about two per acre, two and a half per acre.
You've got all that wet property back there. I mean, you know, it would never be that many houses.
Then, there's a possibility it wouldn't be, and it's also based on step, but just comparing the two densities of what could be with 15,000 square foot lots.
Gotcha.
So the density is not that much, but I think, you know, the balance between connectivity and cut-through and delivery of services and privacy and security and all those things, it's always a challenge for us. That's always the case. And, but, I think planning in general suggests that connectivity and stub streets and multiple ways in and out always give us long-term advantages, and we do lose some of the other things that we do like about cul-de-sacs and exclusive neighborhoods and so forth.
Yeah, it's almost never a good thing when you have a scenario where it's the other side of the tracks or the other side of the cul-de-sac or, but stub streets are built for a reason, and I'm not going to ever question, even though I serve on the Planning Commission, I will never question the intelligence of our planning department because you guys are sharp. And you put stub streets in because you've been educated to say that's where a stub street should go. And I appreciate your willingness to say, even though it's not popular, this is where it should go. If there were a tornado to run down Barfield Road right now, I'll guarantee you, everybody in that subdivision would pray that there was a back access point so that emergency vehicles could get into their neighborhood. There's currently not a back access, and that's the reason I'm assuming that a county engineer probably said, "This is why we should put a stub street here." Even if this property were not annexed into the city and were left to develop as a county neighborhood, I would almost bet that they would develop it with an access point that goes over to Veterans Parkway and connects into this stub street, which would be no different than what we're currently looking at. Even, the lots would be larger, yes, but it would still develop basically the same way because it doesn't have much choice. It's safe to say, and I'm not naive enough to believe, that the people who live in that neighborhood will not cut through this cut-through as well to access Veterans Parkway if the traffic is backed up at the light and they know it's backed up at the light, and they're going to do a ride-out onto Veterans Parkway. It only makes sense that they, too, would use this same route that they're referring to, that other people would use. I absolutely understand and I get that your concern about the increase in traffic because your neighborhood would be changing, but it would change either way, whether it's city or county, if this property's developed, it will change your neighborhood. I really think that anytime you have the ability to increase connectivity and allow traffic to flow to the point of least resistance, you improve traffic flow. You may not improve the neighborhood that's impacted by it, but you improve traffic flow. And my biggest complaint as a city councilman is, Eddie, why can't you do something to improve traffic? And that's exactly what the planning department is trying to do. That's the reason it passed in the Planning Commission, and I think that's probably the reason it should pass tonight.
So on the comment of the second stub-out, that's a definite no, right?
I think, at this time, that's a definite no. I think that at some point in the future, should Mr. Snell decide to sell his property and make it part of this development, that it would come back and it would be a yes, but, but at this time, from all of the discussions I've had with the applicant, it's a no.
I'm missing something here, all right? We keep talking about this second stub-out.
Yes.
If we allow stub-outs right now to areas that aren't being, the owner or landlord doesn't want to sell it, as far as we know, right? But we count that as a second ingress and egress, right? So why won't, I cannot read this, Street?
Street B.
What's that one? What's that say?
Street B.
Street B? Why doesn't that just count as our second stub-out? Because ultimately, one day, it could get to Suzanne, just like any other stub-out that we do to a piece of property. We don't know when it's going to sell. We count that as a second ingress and egress, right?
Right.
Why doesn't that one count as our second ingress and egress?
Because it's not an ingress and egress. It is a stub. They're showing it as a stub, but it doesn't go anywhere. And this offers an immediate connection to somewhere. And on those other developments that we've discussed, had there been, I think, had there been the ability to make an immediate connection, we would have pursued those. Sometimes there's simply nothing to connect to, and so you do just have to put in stubs and hope in the future that development comes along and you can connect to those.
So the answer to the question is, we, the city staff has asked them to do it right here, and I'm trying to learn here, too. I mean, look, you know, part of this is a little devil's advocate, part of it's learning, part of it's just trying to figure out what I'd want to do for the best of everybody here. But, you know, we stub out a stub to nowhere, for lack of better terms, all the time in property that might develop one day. And so we could kind of achieve that here, it seems like to me, is all I'm kind of getting at.
I understand.
And maybe it's, maybe they get a second ingress and egress five years instead of immediately, but by the time this thing develops out and the houses are built and the people are in there, we'll probably be just that much closer to something actually happening, you know, be my guess. Anyway, that's it. I'm not going to talk anymore, I'm sorry.
I came in, I thought I understood this item, but then listening to both sides and then the neighbors offering four options, I'm finding it very hard. Every time someone opens their mouth, I get even more confused on my decision. The way it is now, I personally need more time to just wrap my little pea brain around all of these facts. So if nothing's going to change, none of the options are going to be considered or anything, if that's the case, and the next time it comes up, I can easily change my mind, but right now, I'm going to abstain. Because I, something about it I don't like right now, but I can't put my hands on it, so I need to really study this, so I'll feel comfortable with my decision. Any other comments from the council?
I think one of the things we learned from the 2009 tornado was, we need connectivity to all neighborhoods because we couldn't get to a lot of neighborhoods, and that's what we're seeing here. If this was a private development, we wouldn't be talking about this, but it's not a private development. Everybody keeps talking about Tuscany, that's a private development, private streets. This is not private. And I understand the neighbor's concern. I don't know if they've talked to the developer, what we could do to help alleviate this, but I do believe that we do need this street for safety reasons. And I think that's one of the things we learned from 2009 tornado, that we need connectivity in all our subdivisions. And prime example, what Ronnie talked about was Puckett Station. That's a prime example. It's a mess, and we should never let a subdivision come into the city without two entrances.
And you mentioned Tuscany. It, Tuscany has, with the presentation that they're giving, a stub street coming out of it, going to the north.
But no immediate second access.
There is no immediate second access, but if you look at the properties developed next to it, there is no stub street that comes to that property that we ignored and said, "We're giving this person the advantage." We're talking about Tuscany here now. There's no stub street that comes to Tuscany's property that says, "I'm available to this property." So it's a completely different scenario. If there had have been a stub street there, Tuscany would not have been approved like it currently exists because it would have a second access point if there had been one available, but there wasn't one.
If there are other comments, I'm happy to continue to discuss it, but to move us beyond this point, I'll make a motion, we approve this presented.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll? Mr. Delance?
Can I offer something, just real quickly? I'm sorry, before, if it, I'm not sure how, what everybody's going to vote, but just listening to what people are saying. If there could be some minor adjustments made, pretty minor in the engineering world to get this moved through without the developers having to go back through all the public hearings and all the rearranging stuff again, I'd rather take a couple weeks to look, to let them look at that, to see if that's a possibility or not, before we, I don't know where everybody's at on it, so, but if that.
I'm okay with that.
Well, we've got to take, got to take a vote now. Well, we've got to take a vote, but you could, if it doesn't pass, we could make that review.
If it doesn't pass, does it automatically have to go back through a whole process? Or can we, you know what I'm saying? If we, if there's three noes or three abstains.
If it'll have to go back through the whole process?
It will. All right, so the only way, I mean, that's the way y'all?
But I mean, that's kind of the risk they've taken when they presented it to us this way without a stub street that goes into it. I mean, I just don't think that they would have, I think it's.
If it wasn't presented to them.
They had the option of withdrawing their request. I mean, they felt that way, I mean.
Okay. No.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll?
Oh, sorry, I thought you already.
That's okay.
Yes, Craig, sorry.
Adam's going to look up something real quick. Just give him just a second.
All right.
Okay, let's see what happens. You could see what happens, though. I mean, it might, it actually might solve the problem. Because if you can get that stub street to Suzanne, just sub it to Suzanne.
So you don't need this one?
Digging through Robert's rules.
Mr. Moltan?
Then everything starts. As I've stated before, my client is indifferent to which way we go with this stub street. So if this council wants to vote that they do not need the stub street to Christie-Charlene, we're open to that. We're just moving along with the process of, this is typical planning for the city in regards to public safety, health, welfare on that side. So if this body feels that it is not a necessary connection, we would be open to taking it out of the plan and moving forward with the plan without the connection on that side to Christie-Charlene. But if the body wants to move forward with making the connection, we'll go with that as well. And we are indifferent to which way we go. We were just providing the typical planning perspective for best connectivity between developments and be allowing for the best opportunities for safety on that side. So, I mean, again, there is going to be a future connection potentially to Suzanne over there. We're leaving that stub out on that side. But again, to get back to Mr. Anthony's answer is, it's not an immediate connection at this point in time. The connection to Christie-Charlene today provides connection immediately back. The connection to Christie Charlene today provides connection immediately back to Barfield Road, providing service and health, safety, welfare to both developments, not just our own. So my client is indifferent to either way you vote in regards to, you voted forward with the connection, voted forward without the connection. We're open on both sides.
Do you want to withdraw?
So I, I guess I would ask a question at this point where we are. What I heard Mr. Moltun say was that they were less, um, they felt less strongly. They were trying to accommodate planning and try to do what was best for the city in the plan with the stub street. I do not want my motion and vote to have a negative consequence on, for the developer, potential developer. So would it be better to withdraw my motion, knowing that Mr. Moltun is less specific about that? And I think we feel more strongly about that, or at least I should say, I feel more strongly about that. What are the consequences on voting on it and it not passing versus withdrawing that piece for further discussion?
Wouldn't we have the option of voting on the stub street? And voting on the project itself? I mean, we could vote to remove the stub street or keep the stub street as it exists. And if somebody's opposed to it, they could make a motion. If it fails for lack of a majority, then it would, or vice versa. It, it, you could vote on the substrate, I guess, and, because, I mean, that's what we're talking to, is an amendment, uh, to the project.
Seems like that's what the neighbors are wanting, the sub, the stub street? Is that what they were saying? The stub street?
We've got a motion. I, I don't think anybody can do anything without.
We have a motion on the floor.
But he can withdraw it.
But he hadn't yet. But what I'm saying is, we got a motion on the floor. And we need, we need to do that.
Mr. Tucker.
We've had the public hearing. We also have the option of deferring the vote until we have a full council here, so do we do, so we do not wind up with a tie. In the next meeting, we would probably have a full council.
That is true. You, you, there is the option of postponing the vote on the motion indefinitely. What the consequence of that would be, that it cannot come up at this meeting again. Can't be brought up at this meeting. It could be brought up at a future meeting.
Even after a second has been made, we still have that option?
If, it would have to be withdrawn, the motion.
Well, no, I think the, the motion to postpone indefinitely, if it was.
The vote count, you can, if somebody could make a, and.
We have a motion on the floor, so we have to either withdraw it or vote.
No, no, there's a subsidiary motion. The motion to postpone is a subsidiary motion, and that would, that would have to be voted on first. If, if that.
Motion, we defer till there's a motion on the floor.
No, that's what I'm saying, that there could be, it's a subsidiary motion that has to be voted on first.
So, so let me ask this. So Adam, would we not be going against our subdivision regulations if we vote to remove the stub? Because that's one of the things that we have in our regulations is that it has to have, uh, two entrances. Safety, for safety reasons. So if we, if we do that, we're going back on what our regulations say in our charter.
I'm, I'm not prepared to make a, give a legal opinion.
Okay.
On that point, at, at this point in time, you may be correct, but I can't, I can't render that legal opinion at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay, what are we doing?
I'll make a motion, we defer till the next meeting.
I'll second.
We're deferring the vote on the motion.
Right, yes.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Mr. Wade?
No.
Vice Mayor Skills Harris?
Aye.
All right.
We have a tie.
So you're back to.
Back to the motion?
You're back to the original motion.
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Okay, where are we now?
Back, back to the vote on, uh, Mr. Martin's motion.
Go back to Ronnie's motion.
Will you make a motion again?
Could, let me, let me ask one clarification on this, on an abst, an abstention from the vote. How is that recorded?
The, what is required is a majority of the vote.
Affirmed it.
A majority of the members president, present is required to pass, so.
An abstention.
An abstention does not count towards the majority.
I got you.
It has the same effect as a no vote.
So when the mayor comes back and we bring this up for the second reading, when the mayor comes back, that vote will stand because it can't be, somebody's going to break the tie.
There will be a second reading on this, yes.
If it passes. If it passes. It passes.
If it, yes, if, if it passes tonight, there will be a second reading.
Yes. Okay. We have a motion on the floor and we have a second. So Mrs. Wright, now will you call this roll?
Mr. LaLance?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Shacklet?
Abstain.
Mr. Smotherman?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
And in this case, abstaining, it'd be like a no?
Yes.
No?
No. So we had three.
The motion does not pass.
We had three vote yes.
So the motion does not pass. It was required a majority of the, uh, members present.
Correct.
And Mr. Anthony, I want to get with you on some details. Okay. Next, we, uh, need to schedule a public hearing, City of Murfreesboro Fire Rescue.
This will be a little bit less complicated, I hope. Uh, Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department has a series of ten right-of-way annexations. Uh, the city has obtained permission from Mutherford County and the Tennessee Department of Transportation to move forward with those annexations. We are requesting that you schedule a public hearing for these items on May 2nd.
May 2nd, okay with everyone? I will be out on May 2nd, though.
Okay.
I'm just one.
I'll be here if the good Lord's willing.
So moved.
Ronnie, you want to be all okay with the second? Hold on, Mr. La, LaLance wants to hold on the second.
If my flight comes in, I'll be here. If it's delayed, I'll, I won't be.
So it's a possibility two of us will be out?
I mean, I should be here, but I, I set my flight up to get back in time, but just in case.
Okay, so we're going to say yes.
All right.
Mr. Anthony?
So we need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skills Harris?
Aye.
Okay, schedule a public hearing for the various zoning and annexation.
Uh, Planning Commission has made recommendations for five items at its March 6th meeting, and we would request to schedule the public hearings for those, uh, for May 2nd, please.
Same thing? Okay, Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
I need a first and a.
First and second motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skills Harris?
Aye.
Okay, purchase of electronic fare equipment.
All right, good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. Um, before you use a request, you use funds allocated in the fiscal year 2019 budget for the purchase of electronic fare equipment for the city's transit buses. Since Rover began in 2007, we've used simple metal fare box with a hole in the top that, uh, the passengers drop tickets and cash into. It's a very basic fare collection process, and it allows for little to no options in, in fare payment. Uh, with a new state-of-the-art system, we'll be able to provide a better customer experience with multiple fare options that include cash, single ride tickets, day passes, monthly passes, and smart cards. All of these are items that our passengers have consistently requested. Um, in addition, it will provide for better accountability and reporting capabilities that we do not currently have. Uh, the total cost for this equipment is $271,716. The funding comes from FTA 5339 allocations with 80% being used, uh, or 80% being federal dollars, 10% state, and a 10% local match of $27,171. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Comments? If not, will we get a motion and a second, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Abstain.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skills Harris?
Aye. Thank you.
Item number, number 19 has been removed.
Number 18 is what we're.
18. Sorry, but 19 has been removed. Professional services for Mercury Boulevard Sidewalk Project Phase Two.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Uh, we have before you tonight a professional service contract for the Mercury Boulevard Sidewalk Project Phase Two. Uh, staff recommends approval of this contract. Uh, can we give you a little bit of background information? Uh, staff through TDOT's Competitive Transportation Alternative Program, or TAP, grant, uh, submitted a proposal for a sidewalk project for the Mercury Boulevard, uh, from Middle Tennessee Boulevard to Apollo Drive. The intent of the project is to provide enhanced pedestrian safety by constructing a sidewalk system along the section of Mercury Boulevard where none, none currently exist. We're also looking at upgrading the signal at Mercury and Minerva to provide, uh, pedestrian features. Uh, TAP grant funding provides for 80% of construction cost only. Uh, the city's responsibility includes 20% of the construction as well as 100% of cost of PE NEPA, PE Design Utility Coordination Right-Away. TDOT awarded the city this grant, uh, in August of 2018. The city council subsequently approved the contract with TDOT on September 20th. Uh, city staff solicited pro, proposals as outlined in TDOT's Local Program Development Office manual. On December 11th, the engineering department received statements of qualifications from three firms that were shortlisted from letters of interest. After reviewing the qualifications of each firm, as well as review of prior performances, staff recommended Neil Schaefer to perform the desired services. Council priorities serve for safe and livable neighborhoods and strong and sustainable financial and economic health. Physical impact for this project, um, the Neil Schaefer contract is a time and materials not to exceed $235,870. Engineering costs will be funded by the city at 100% and is currently programmed in existing and future CIP. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions? Comments?
No questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance? Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skills Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 19 has been withdrawn. Okay, Veterans Parkway Atmos Easement Donation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the, uh, city council. In preparation for future development along Veterans Parkway, Atmos Energy is acquiring easements outside the right-of-way in order to install utility addition, for additional capacity. Uh, the city owns, bought a, a property, uh, back when we acquired right-of-way for, for Veterans Parkway, and there's some, a remnant there that's left. And Atmos is requet, requesting an easement across that, uh, property. It's at the corner of Veterans Parkway, uh, between Old Salem and an old abandoned portion of Windrow Road. The easement donation was approved by Planning Commission, uh, March, uh, 6th of, uh, of this year, and we would recommend, uh, your approval as well. There are not any physical impacts with this donation. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? If not, could we get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll?
Mr. LaLance?
Abstain.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skills Harris?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, Lidle Street Phase Two, change order number five.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Uh, do have change order number five, uh, for the Lidle Street Phase Two project. During the construction of the Lidle Street Phase Two, uh, several unforeseen circumstances were encountered as in common, as is common when working in older areas. Uh, most of these had to do with utility and drainage facilities, underground items that, uh, we either didn't know were present or were, uh, needed to be repaired after we actually started construction. Uh, therefore, additional excavations, conduits, shoring of those excavations, concrete removal, uh, materials for back fill and other measures, uh, were, were required, um, to, to construct necessary facilities and to ensure vehicle and pedestrian safety throughout the construction. This, uh, change order is an amount of $486,156 and will bring the, uh, total contract price, uh, including change orders number one through four, uh, to a total of $6,93,457. There's not really any, uh, fiscal impact, uh, due to this, uh, change order. As the funds were available, we had a balance that was remaining, um, as, as part of this, um, of the debt issuances allocated for this project. With that, I'll be happy to answer any question.
Any questions or comments? If not, will we get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skills Harris?
Aye.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Any beer permits?
Not tonight.
Boys, uh, commissions? Payment bills?
Not tonight.
Any other business?
Down here.
Okay, everybody be safe for spring break, be careful, and may God continue to bless you. Till we meet again and we stand adjourned. We meet again, and we stand adjourned.